If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the Select Board, respective town staff, those in attendance this evening, and good evening to those watching at home. And welcome to the January 17, 2023 Exeter Select Board Meeting and also our Public Bond and Budget Hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce the board to you. To my right is the Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And to my left are Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And next to Selectwoman Gilman, we have Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And all the way to the left, our Town Engineer, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening.
Good evening to you. And we have our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening, Joanna.
My name is Nico Powerposten-Dies. Unfortunately, Selectwoman Levy Roundtree Olaf had a conflict and will not be able to attend the meeting this evening, so will be the four of us.
Before we get started with the Budget Bond Hearing, we do have a couple of quick items on the agenda, first of which is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come up to the Select Board with comments. We do ask if your comments are related to the agenda items. Wait until that time, so I'll pause for a moment. Seeing none, before we move on to approval of the minutes, I would like to acknowledge we have two Exeter High School students who serve as liaisons to the Energy Committee, Olivia and Neela. And this evening, we have Olivia and her sister here, joining us to watch how local government works. So, welcome, and nice to see you, and hopefully you'll be regulars.
Yay!
I also want to remind folks that last week, Chief Pool brought in Maple, Police Department's Comfort Dog. And we just want to remind folks in town that Maple is here, Maple is available. If anybody needs Maple to act as comfort, please contact the Police Department, Chief Pool. Also, remind folks that if they're in trouble, or if they need someone to speak with, to call 988. There's always somebody to listen, there's somebody to help. We do have those resources, we want to remind folks. And we want to remind folks just how responsive and how appreciative we are of our public safety, who look after us and respond when they need to. But again, if we could just reach out to the chief, the Police Department, we have Maple, and remember 988. Thank you. With that, we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening, the first of which is the Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of January 3, 2023. I'd ask the board first if there are any amendments or revisions.
I have two. On page five, D, Select Board Committee Report. I'm the first one, and there are two things. The first sentence, it says, "which reduce their ass to three houses," I think it should say house lots.
Okay.
And then the last sentence, "they are not willing to come to Exeter unless more people organize a pickup."
Oh, dear.
No.
They're coming to Exeter. They have to have a number, 16 people calling for a pickup for that to happen.
Okay.
I just, if I said that, that was, I misspoke.
Okay, no, those are two good pickups. Joanna, did you get those? Any others?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of January 3, 2023, as amended.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0. And we also have the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of January 9, 2023. I would ask if there are any amendments or revisions?
I'm getting a message that says we are muted. Our meeting is muted as it's being broadcast.
Okay. Can we get Will before we move any further? Thank you. No, I just lost this.
People on their TVs can hear, it's just in the Zoom. I think it got muted.
Oh, I see.
Um...
Testing. Can you all hear? Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Good?
Yes.
Thank you. So to start that one over, the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of January 9, 2023, excuse me, I ask if there are any amendments or revisions?
None.
Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of January 9, 2023.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Okay. So our discussion items this evening solely revolve around the bond and budget hearings. I'm going to read, we'll start with the bond hearing. It's a legal notice, Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Exeter, 2023 Bonds. The Exeter Select Board hereby gives notice of a public hearing pursuant to RSA 338A on the following projects requiring bonds and notes as part of the fiscal year 2023 Town Warrant. Number one, the police station and fire substation. Number two, the West Side Drive Area Reconstruction. Number three, the intersection improvements. Number four, the solar array landfill property. Five, the groundwater source development. And six, Court Street Sewer Pump Station Equipment Replacement. The public hearings will be held on Tuesday, January 17, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM in the Exeter Town Office's Novak Room 10, Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. The public is encouraged to attend, and this was dated December 20, 2022. So at this time, I would enter a motion to open the public hearing for the Town of Exeter, 2023 Bonds.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is open. First bond article is Article III for the police station and fire substation. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,300,000 for the purpose of design, engineering, and net zero construction of a new police station and fire substation on Continental Drive, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $16,300,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and further to authorize the Select Board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project. Debt service to be paid from the general fund. The estimated tax impact, assuming a 20-year bond at 4% interest, would be 65 cents per thousand, $60 per 100,000 of assessed property value. Bond payments would begin approximately one year after issuance, and a 3/5 ballot vote is required for approval." Mr. Dean, is there staff to speak to this warrant article?
Maybe Dave could say a few minutes, a few things, and Chief Poolen and Chief Woking are both here as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Have to switch gears because I was here. The solar, but yeah, the public safety complex, we've been here, you know, several times, went through several iterations. It started with an idea that we worked through the Facilities Advisory Committee. We ended up going out to a warrant article that was passed by the voters to explore different options for a public safety complex. And we hired LaValle Brenzinger Architects to help us with that endeavor. They worked with the Facilities Advisory Committee, the chiefs, town staff, and they proposed several different options. We vetted several different sites. We had a site out off Pollen Way that the town owned. We had a site, the existing site, looked at that. We even looked, you know, 32, 30, 32 Court Street where the rec is, looked at kind of a PD only because of the size. And then we also had a two-acre parcel out at 6 Continental Drive that the town purchased, I want to say 2010-ish, right around there, for public safety use. It's a vacant lot that actually fit and met the needs. So through the various process, we selected, we narrowed that down to the most viable option, and came back to the Select Board because there was a question of, you know, there's been established need for a fire substation for many years in multiple studies, and a new police station, where we wanted to look at a new police station and a fire substation, and that was kind of the direction we, you know, we were instructed to go in. So we went with that, and we came up with this warrant article that's for $16,300,000. Will cover a new police station and a fire substation at 6 Continental Drive. And also, this includes, because we were asked to look at net zero approach, meaning the building can meet all the high-energy codes, really, really, you know, is, really meets energy, high-energy efficiencies, but just net zero approach or net zero ready means it has everything except the PV, except the solar panels. So it has all the, you know, other, you know, or geothermal, or whatever kind of, you know, you're going to use in that combination. So that was a 4% addition, and that is reflected in the price, a 4% markup from the price. So we should be able to have a net zero-ready building for the total amount.
Great, thank you. Members of the public wish to speak or ask questions? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments from the board? I know we've revisited this several times and...
Fine as is.
Then with no other comment or questions, I would entertain a motion for, I would entertain a motion to recommend for approval Article III for the police station and fire substation at $16,300,000.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
I have a quick question. Is Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf going to be able to weigh in on this if she wants to?
Could do that at the deliberative session, couldn't we? We re-vote on them? Because sometimes when there's an amendment to a warrant article, we do.
It is, Selectwoman Gilman got it just right. I think if there's an article that gets amended at the deliberative session, then there's another opportunity to vote on it after that.
No, I know, but it's, you know, there are five people on the board, and then it's going to go on with 4-0. And I know that's happened before.
Right.
So I, it's a great question. I spoke with her this afternoon, and when she explained her conflict, we walked through what the different options were. She was very comfortable with the fact that we have reviewed all of these. There was nothing that, she was comfortable with the vote being 4-0, and obviously she'll be a deliberative session. And when I spoke with Mr. Dean, he cited times in the past where a Select Board member or two have been ill and not able to. And then, of course, last year with 4-0.
Yep.
Thank you for the question. Okay, the next is Article IV, the West Side Drive Area Reconstruction. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,020,000 for the purpose of construction of water, sewer, and drainage improvements in the West Side Drive area, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $6,020,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and further to authorize the Select Board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project. The town will receive 20% debt forgiveness from the New Hampshire DES to offset a portion of the cost of the project. Debt service will be paid from the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. The estimated tax impact, assuming a 15-year bond at 4% interest, is .115 cents per thousand, or $11.50 per 100,000 of assessed property value. Bond payments would begin approximately one year after issuance, and a 3/5 ballot vote required for approval." Mr. Dean, anybody to speak to this, or?
I think Mr. Vlasic is here with us tonight and can speak to it.
Good evening, Mr. Vlasic.
Hello, Paul Vlasic, Town Engineer. This project started in FY '20. We had a SRF loan with $100,000, with $75,000 principal forgiveness to figure out what we can do in this neighborhood. This neighborhood was a high inflow and infiltration contributor to our sewer system, which we wanted to get that extra flows out of the system. During the meetings with the neighborhood, and these were done during the, some of the COVID periods and stuff, it was done on Zoom, we had pretty good participation. And in that, we discovered we had to replace the water main also. We are going to also reconstruct the road when the utilities are replaced. Last year, FY '22, the town approved $330,715 for design of the project, which is underway now. And that also included, that number included $122,000-ish principal forgiveness and state ARPA funds. What we're asking for here is the construction up to $6.02 million. And this project ranked fairly highly with the stormwater SRF. And the clean water side of this, the drain and the sewer portions are available, will have some potential 20% principal forgiveness also.
Thank you. Any members of the public wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments for Mr. Vlasic?
Fine as is.
Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article IV, West Side Drive Area Reconstruction, in the amount of $6,020,000.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Article V, Intersection Improvements. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $798,000 for the purpose of making intersection improvements to the Pine Street, Linden Street, and Front Street intersection, and the Railroad Avenue, Winter Street, and Columbus Street intersection, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $798,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and further to authorize the Select Board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project. Debt service will be paid from the general fund. The estimated tax impact, assuming a 10-year bond at 4% interest, is 50 cents per thousand, or $5 per 100,000 of estimated property value. Bond payments would begin approximately one year after issuance." Mr. Vlasic?
Again, just start out with a little bit of history. Back in FY '19, the town approved $50,000 for an intersection improvement study. The consultants looked at four intersections. Two of those are on the Article V. The first and the biggest is the Front Pine and Linden Street intersection. Throughout the study, there is a concept on the town website in that study for a roundabout that equates to $720,000. The other intersection is the Winter Street, Railroad Street, Columbus Avenue intersection, of which that equates to about $78,000. And those are fairly minor improvements on edge of pavement, stop bars, and some additional sidewalk, only in that local area.
And thank you. Any members of the public wish to comment or speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I know we had a presentation on this earlier in the fall, where we had the four different options presented to us, and the board indicated these two were the direction. Any additional comment?
Fine as is.
Very well. Then I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article V for the intersection improvements in the amount of $798,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Article VI, Solar Array Landfill Property. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,452,999..." I beg your pardon. "...to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,452,999 to be added to Article IV of the 2021 Town Meeting, for the purpose of constructing a solar array on town-owned land described as Map 98, Lot 3, and Tax Map 100, Lot 4, and authorize the issuance of not more than $1,452,999 of bonds or notes to be added to $3,617,629 in bonding authority approved by Article IV of the 2021 Town Meeting, all in accordance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and further to authorize the Select Board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project. Debt service will be paid by the revenue generated by selling the power and renewable energy certificates, and the proceeds from the 30% solar investment tax credit. The estimated tax impact is none, assuming revenues and assuming a 20-year bond at a 4% interest. Bond payments would begin approximately one year after issuance, and this does require a 3/5 ballot vote for approval." Mr. Sharples, please.
Thank you. Dave Sharples, Town Planner. And quickly, two things. If the board has any questions tonight, I do have virtually attending Dan Weeks from Revision. He is on Zoom, and Larry Pignataro from Competitive Energy Services, who is our third-party review.
Great, thank you.
We provided you, I provided you a pretty lengthy memo, three and a half pages. I try to keep it to one, but you just can't on this project. But I'll briefly, the brief as I can, I'd just like to, you know, kind of go over it quickly.
The project deserves more than brevity, so take your time.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you. So I, finally, I'm pleased to say I've completed my research for the review of a potential, you know, solar array at the Crossroad Landfill. We have been here before. So just want to get to how we got here first, and then I'll go over the pro-formers I got in the third-party review, and then just end it with a summary. But I explored the potential solar array at the landfill for many years that ended up resulting in a warrant article in March of 2021 for $3,617,629. And at the time, that's what Revision Energy gave us, that was the turnkey cost of a 1.77 megawatt system. The unknown at that point, though, was the interconnection study with Unitil had not been completed. But I proposed it that way because Revision was going to absorb that cost. The interconnection study is about $25,000. To find out if, you know, it was feasible or what it would cost. So the vote was approved. I mean, the voters approved the warrant article, and then we engaged with the interconnection study with Unitil. That took a lot longer than, you know, the agreement usually says. But during that, it took about eight months, where usually it's like 55 days. But it took eight months, and then it came back with about six, came back, they estimated $641,000 for the interconnection cost to provide interconnection components, labor and materials to connect the solar array into the existing infrastructure. That was a lot higher than Revision initially. They had carried in that 3.6 million, they carried about $125,000 for that connection. So that was really a significant change. It was about a half million dollars. Then coupled that rapid inflation during that time, inflation, everything went up, 25%, 30%, the labor and materials, and it really had a chilling effect on the project. And I thought, well, there's no, you know, there's no viable way to move forward. But then just this past August, the Inflation Reduction Act gets passed into law that provides, that had a new provision that provided renewable energy projects that, like this, that municipalities could take advantage of the 30% investment tax credit. So it went up 30%, and then it gets a 30% investment tax credit, so the number started to look good again. To avoid what happened last time, I kind of waited. I came to this board like in October, said, okay, I'm going to wait till kind of the last minute so we get current pricing in today's market. So I just did that the last couple of weeks, and I sent you two pro-formers, one from Revision Energy and one from Competitive Energy Services, our third-party review. I'm not going to go into the weeds on those, but I just, I do want to highlight some, you know, some similarities and some differences. As you will see, both pro-formers agree on the system's kilowatt-hour generation throughout the life of the system. So they agree that the system is going to generate, you know, X in electricity, because all these things result in, you know, financially, whether it works or not. So generation is a big key. They agree on that. The pro-formers differ significantly regarding the estimated future value of the net metering credit. And I'll go into that just briefly in a second, but I'll finish my highlights. Both pro-formers agree on the future price of renewable energy credits, or called RACs. So they both agree that, you know, they're going to be worth, what, $35, $35? And actually, in CES's, or Competitive Energy Services memo that I provided as well, they believe that Revision's assumptions of rec market value is very conservative. So they feel that, you know, would be a little bit higher, but they carried that number. Revision's pro-forma shows the project being cash flow positive from day one to the end of the useful life of the project. So you'll get the credit, and it will make money from year one throughout the life of the project. It will never get in the red, if you will, from Revision Energy. CES, Competitive Energy Services pro-forma, however, shows the project being cash flow positive from year one through year 11, before going into the red between years 12 and 20, and then the life of the loans paid, and then it starts making money. Both pro-formers show the project as cash positive at the end of the 25-year warranty period of the system. Revision estimates accumulative savings of $4,852,768 at the end of the 25-year warranty period. So the town will have made, you know, that amount at the end of the 25. Competitive Energy Services, much more conservative, and they say that the estimated cumulative savings are $5,000,000. savings of $562,419 at the end of the 25-year warranty period. And just real briefly to go over the significance, the difference is, a lot of their assumptions are the same, and also, I see that it's 4% interest. These pro-formas are based on 5.5% interest, because that's what the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank said to use, but that's, that could change. That's very positive. If it is 4%, that changes these numbers quite a bit. So I think we're safe on the 5.5% interest rate being, you know, possibly high. If we're basing it off, you know, 4%, these numbers would look better. But the significant difference is mainly due to the assumptions of Revision and Competitive Energy Services outlook on the utility market, and what the value of the electricity is created is going to be. Where Revision says year one is going to be 17 cents a kilowatt hour, based on, you know, current pricing and so forth, and what they feel the credit value is going to be, then they apply a 2.5% escalator every year for the life of the project. So it goes from 17 cents, you know, and then just gradually goes up and ends at 44 cents a year 40 years from now. And that is based, they provided, I provided this before to the board, we've had these discussions, but briefly, they base it on historical data, you know, inflation and so forth. But it's never like that. It kind of goes up, comes down, you know, but as you do a trend line, it's about 2.5%, you know, 2, 2.5% a year escalator. So we thought it was a fair assumption to make. However, Competitive Energy Services said the value of the solar in year one will be 12 cents, and then it's going to go down. And it's going to sharply decrease to about 9 cents 3 years from now, and then it is not going to come back up to the price it is today until 2058 for 35 years. It's not, and the value is not going to be there, which is great news for the individual tax, you know, electricity ratepayer, if that's the case. So they're very different. That's the difference in the assumptions, because the value of the solar, you know, results in thing. But at the end of the day, even though they're very different, they do show a positive after 25 years. So I provided all the information above. I mean, I got a lot more weeds, you know, I provided a lot more weeds in my memo that I'm saying today, but hopefully, providing enough, you know, information, happy to answer any questions, to allow the select board to make an informed decision on putting the warrant article forward to the voters to construct the solar array. One thing I do have to mention is that we've been working this current pricing down to, you know, down to the day, and that was left over from, I think, an August number. So it would not be $1,452,990. It would be $1,609,645. I'll say it again, $1,609,645. And that represents the most current estimate, and that's what the pro-forma was based on. It wasn't based, it's based on, you know, the addition of $1,609,000. It wasn't based on that number.
So you're recommending that be the amount, the $1,609,645?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That would, that would have to be the number based on the latest estimates. We will, we anticipate the ITC credit value of $1,332,955. That would be the ITC. So it'd almost cover it all, but there's also a contingency in here that was added because of the uncertainty, and it's reflected in the pro-forma. So it could actually be, you know, we could actually cover it all with the ITC credit, but we don't know that. We added a contingency just due to the market between now and the time we go out to bond.
Okay.
So the, beyond the data, I just wanted to take a minute. Beyond the data, the facts, the potential monetary impacts of the system, there are other considerations that could go into the decision-making process. And while the financials are extremely important to any project, there are, in my opinion, multiple benefits associated with developing renewable energy sources. One, one of the reasons why I asked Competitive Energy Services, I said, why do you think the price is going to go down on electricity? Where it's all, you know, like lately, it's just, you know, it's just on a roller coaster straight up. And they said that the, the, one, in part, the introduction of renewable energy, local renewable energy sources, is actually going to have a deflationary effect on the market because it's cheaper to create local renewable energy sources and supply that energy than it is our current structure heavily reliant on natural gas. So that just, you know, that's a real benefit. You know, the more we move, it just costs less to provide energy. So I thought that was really important, because New Hampshire's cost electricity is currently heavily dependent on the price of natural gas. That's, you know, what natural gas does, our electric bills do. And it's a global commodity, and events that are worlds away from New Hampshire affect what we pay in electricity. So I see there's an intangible, you can't really monetize it, maybe you could, but you know, it would have to be a model full with a lot of assumptions, that building, you know, more resilient and local source of energy and reducing our dependence on fossil fuels can definitely lead, in my opinion, to a more secure and sustainable future. So just thought, mention that as additional consideration to build these that maybe not are reflected in a financial pro-forma. So with that, I've given you a lot of information, tried to be as brief as possible, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we have Dan Weeks and Larry Pignataro here.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Sharples. Open it up to the public for comments or discussion? If you could just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, Renee Allen, Chair of the Energy Committee. I'd like to state one more thing that, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Sharples for his years of work on this project. It's been a moving target with all the different factors and flocks between the interest rates and the cost of energy and the wars and, but one thing that I would like to point out to the board is that another benefit of this array would be that we would be annually removing or not using 2.2 million pounds of carbon. This would offset 2.2 million pounds of carbon annually, and I think that's a very important factor also. There are high school students here from the Energy Committee, and I think we owe it to them and to our grandchildren to offset 2.2 million pounds of carbon every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments?
I think we've been talking about this for the years we've been excited about it. Excuse me.
Three years.
Yeah. I'm just so excited that it's happening. Right.
Finally. Well, that's the one question I have, because I think the last time around, you know, you had unanimous support from the board, and I think that's pretty safe to say you do now, but when you said it usually takes 55 days, and it took eight months, I mean, do we, can we anticipate that this time around, it will be able to move forward as it should?
Yes, because that all work has been completed.
Great.
And the reason why I'm before you today, kind of waited until like the last day to come forward, was Revision, you know, that market's changing all the time, but they said, we'll honor the, our price for 60 days, and we are 60 days, we're within 60 days of the March vote.
Perfect.
So we kind of played it that way. So shouldn't be, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good answer.
And then also, the utility, we signed an interconnection agreement with Unitil. We're under no obligation to move forward, but we have signed that, and it's $338,000, because we really drilled down and worked with them over the, over the last few months and drilled down that number. So we're much more confident with that number than we used to be.
Okay, good, thank you. I wanted the public to hear that. Mr. Dean, do we first need to make a motion to amend the dollar figure?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the first item of business. I would entertain a motion to amend the dollar figure in Article 6 for the solar array landfill to $1,609,645?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. If there are no other comments or questions, then I would entertain a motion for the select board to recommend Article 6 Solar Array Landfill Property in the amount of $1,609,645.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Sharples, and thank you to the Energy Committee for seeing us this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Article 7, Groundwater Source Development. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500,000 for the purpose of continuing efforts to develop groundwater sources in the town and to authorize the issuance of not more than $500,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and further to authorize the select board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to authorize the select board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project. Debt service to be paid from the water fund, and a 3/5th ballot vote is required for approval. Mr. Vlasic?
Yeah, as the article says, this is a continuing effort on the groundwater source development. We have a decent place that we, off a drink water road, that we have determined through our consultants, have the capacity of 400 gallons per minute. We are currently under a, applied for a permit for a large groundwater discharge. What needs to happen next with some of the existing monies that we already have is land owner negotiations, and then to actually construct a gravel pack well on that particular parcel. What this new money, this $500,000 is for, is for the actual design of wellhouse and also transmission, to figure out the transmission route and to design that also. And this raw water is going to head over to the Larry Lane Treatment Plant over there.
Thank you. Any members of the public wish to comment or speak to this article? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions for Mr. Vlasic?
I'm fine as is. We need to keep working on our water supply.
Agreed.
Co-sign, yes.
And I would entertain a motion for the select board to recommend Article 7 for the groundwater source development in the amount of $500,000.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0. And the last one. Thank you for coming.
Night.
Good night. Article 8, The Court Street Sewer Pump Station Equipment Replacement. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $400,000 for the purpose of replacing aged equipment at the Court Street Sewer Pump Station, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $400,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and further to authorize the select board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to authorize the select board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project. Debt service to be paid from the sewer fund, and it does require a 3/5th ballot vote for Mr. Vlasic?
So the Court Street Pump Station has three old pumps in it, and this $400,000 will replace those three pumps.
Okay. Any members of the public wish to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions?
I'm fine as is.
Very well. Then I would entertain a motion for the select board to recommend Article 8 for the Court Street Sewer Pump Station Equipment Replacement, $400,000.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Sorry.
Opposed? Motion passes 4-0. That concludes all of the bonds that we've put on the warrant. I'd ask one final time if there's any public input. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the bond articles.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is closed. We'll move on to the operating budget. A legal notice was issued, a notice of public hearing, Town of Exeter 2023 Operating Budget. The Exeter Select Board hereby gives notice of a public hearing on the Town of Exeter Fiscal Year 2023 Operating Budget and all financial and other warrant articles on Tuesday, January 17, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Novak Room of the Exeter Town Offices. This hearing will be held pursuant to RSA 32:5 and RSA 40:13, which is dated December 20, 2022. At this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the Town of Exeter 2023 Operating Budget.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is open. I would first remind folks that the first session, the deliberative session of the annual town meeting, will be held on Saturday, February 4, 2023, commencing at 9:00 AM at the Arthur L. Hanson Center, the Arthur L. Hanson III Center for the Performing Arts at Exeter High School, 1 Blue Hawk Drive. The first session will consist of explanation, discussion, and debate of each of the following warrant articles, and will also afford voters who are present the opportunity to propose, debate, and adopt amendments to warrant articles, except those articles in which wording is prescribed by state law. The second session of the annual town meeting, which will elect town officers by official ballot and to vote on all warrant articles, as they may have been amended at the first session, will be held on Tuesday, March 14, 2023, the Talbot Gymnasium at the Tuck Learning Center, 30 Linden Street. Polls for voting by official ballot will begin at, will open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. The first article would be the election of elected officials. The second article is a zoning amendment, which will be recommended or not by the planning board. We've gone through the bond articles, which brings us to... There with me. Article nine, which is to choose town officers, bringing us to Article 10, which is the 2023 Operating Budget. Shall the Town of Exeter raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriation by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $21,287,697. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $21,49,573, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Town of Exeter or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, Rule Number 10 and Rule Number 16, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The estimated tax impact is 43 cents per thousand assessed property value or $43 per 100,000 assessed property value. Majority vote is required. Open it up for the public for any comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions?
No, I'm fine as is. It's another, I mean, not much increase over the year before.
No.
It's, as always, the Budget Committee, I think, did an excellent job vetting everything.
Absolutely.
And I thank them all for their work, because it is a lot, intense work for a few months for our Budget Committee. They vet every single line.
They do, and the budget, the budget season starts in the summer, starting with the department heads, working with town manager and assistant town manager, bringing the draft to the select board first in the fall, in September, then the Budget Recommendations Committee, and the selectwoman Belanger said they go over and scrutinize every single budget line item. Recommendation was made to the board at the first meeting in December, and I know this board has... and I know this board has deliberated over this and vetted the budget carefully over the last couple of meetings.
Yeah, and I want to thank our department heads and town manager. The Budget Committee, I think almost everyone on the Budget Committee this year commented about the lean requests.
Truly collaborative effort. So if there are no other comments, then I would entertain a motion to approve Artic... to, I beg your pardon, I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article 10, which is the 2023 Operating Budget, of $21,287,697.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Moving on to Article 11, which is the 2023 Water Fund Budget. Shall the Town of Exeter raise and appropriate as a water operating budget, not including appropriation by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein, totaling $4,549,370. Should this article be defeated, the water default budget shall be $4,391,224, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Town of Exeter or by law. Majority vote is required. Open it up to members of the public. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'm fine as is.
And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 11, 2023 Water Fund Budget, in the amount of $4,549,370.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Article 12 is the 2023 Sewer Fund Budget. Shall the Town of Exeter raise and appropriate a sewer operating budget, not including appropriation by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $7,432,301. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $7,194,062, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Town of Exeter or by law. Majority vote is required. We'll open it up to members of the public. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Fine as is.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 12 for the sewer operating, the 2023 Sewer Operating Budget in the amount of $7,432,301.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Article 13, Vector Truck Replacement. To see if the town shall vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a seven-year lease purchase agreement for $548,369 for the purpose of lease purchasing a replacement for a Vector truck in the Public Works Sewer Department, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $10273, which represents the first seven, the first of seven annual payments, a total of $636,108 for this purpose. The lease purchase will contain an escape, non-appropriation clause, and the sum to come from water funds, majority vote is required. Open it up to the public. Comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Fine as is.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 13 for the Vector Truck Replacement in the amount of $548,369.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Article 14, Sewer Capability Rehabilitation. To see if the town will raise and appropriate through special warrant article the sum of $380,000 for the purpose of engineering services related to sewer capacity rehabilitation. The sum to come from sewer funds. Open it up to the public. Mr. Vlasic?
The purpose of this warrant article is to design some new sewers that are currently at capacity. And the trunk line starts at High Street Bridge, goes up High Street to Gilman Lane, and that's approximately 550 feet. And then goes into Gilman Lane. Excuse me while I find the actual dimensions here. And then goes into Gilman Lane for another 2,100 feet, and that'll be an 18-inch diameter sewer. And from there, there will be 2,500 feet of relining the cross-country sewer as you head on towards the outer skirts of town. So this is to design that project.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Vlasic? Comments?
I have a question. I just don't know if it's appropriate to ask at this point. We're responsible for that section of Gilman Lane that is on the agenda tonight to rename that little neck, that little hook area. When you say Gilman Lane, are you, you're talking about the current Gilman Lane?
I'm talking, let me, let me use current construction.
Yeah, sorry.
Up next to Portsmouth Avenue, where the PEA is constructing the neighborhood housing.
Yes, yeah, and I don't mean to confuse it. It's just that right now, it's, we have our Gilman Lane that we all know. And tonight in our packet, they're talking about renaming that little area. So Gilman Lane will start at the light.
Okay.
So that little area, which is now Gilman Lane, and what'd you say, I forgot how many feet going into that for replacement?
Yep.
That's, we're, we're responsible for that road, that area.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 14, Sewer Capacity Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $380,000.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Article 15, Linden Street Bridge Rehabilitation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $295,000 for the purpose of making repairs and rehabilitation of the Linden Street Bridge. This sum to come from taxation. The estimated tax impact is .132 cents per thousand or $13.17 per 100,000 assessed property value. A majority vote is required. Mr. Vlasic?
Yes, the Linden Street Bridge currently is exhibiting some bulging out of the abutments and wing walls. This, this project will create some pins and then a new concrete abutment around those areas.
Thank you. We'll open it up to the public.
I'm enjoying that work so far. It's very well done. Thank you.
Bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments for Mr. Vlasic?
No, this is more for the people that have lived through the Linden Street culvert replacement, which was the bridge, but this is not the same place. The next bridge up at it.
Yes, this is the Exeter River.
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 15, the Linden Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $295,000.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Article 16, Sidewalk Tractor Number 57 Replacement. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement for $177,705 for the purpose of lease purchasing a replacement for a sidewalk tractor in the Public Works Department, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,286, which represents the first of five annual payments, a total of $191,939 for this purpose. This lease purchase will contain an escape, non-appropriation clause. This sum to come from general taxation. The estimated tax impact is 18 cents per thousand or $1.80 per 100,000 of assessed property value. A majority vote is required.
So this sidewalk tractor that we're going to replace has been double the anticipated useful life on that. So we have four tractors. This new tractor will replace one of them, and that one will be used for scavenger parts.
Thank you. Open it up to the public for any discussion? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Dean, I know the Budget Recommendations Committee had quite a robust and thorough conversation with then Director Perry as well as DPW management that was represented here during the budget talks. And I just would like to praise both the department and, and your office for truly trying to identify which vehicles we can still get another couple of years out of without compromising safety. And I think that the conversation that the BRC had with all of our replaced, vehicle replacements was quite informative, and I think we're really trying to look out for identifying the ones that are really in need of being replaced for safety reasons. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I would, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 16 for the Sidewalk Tractor Number 57 Replacement in the amount of $177,705.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Article 17, appropriate to Capital Reserve Funds for the Parks Improvements in the amount of $100,000 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be added to the Parks Improvement Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This sum to come from unassigned fund balance. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. And this would require a majority vote. Tonight, we have Mr. Greg Beeson with Parks and Rec. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening. As you know, this is the fifth year that we'll have the Parks Improvement Fund. The last four years, the residents have been very generous. We've accomplished 41 different projects with this fund. So it is helping us dig out from the vast majority of deferred maintenance that we have on the parks.
Great. Any questions or comments? We'll open it up to the public for any discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 17 to appropriate to the Capital Reserve Fund for Parks Improvements in the amount of $100,000.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. And Greg, I want to thank you. Over the last couple of years, I mean, you really identified the needs of the parks and the work that you've done with this money that the voters have voted to give you has been exceptional, so appreciate your work. Thank you. Article 18, to appropriate to the Sick Leave Trust Fund in the amount of $100,000 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be added to the Sick Leave Expendable Trust Fund previously established. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote is required. Any member of the public wish to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any comments?
Fine as is. Standard.
Then I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 18 to appropriate to the Sick Leave Trust Fund in the amount of $100,000.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Article 19, Highway Truck Replacement. To see if the town will raise and appropriate through special warrant sum of $53,558 for the purpose of purchasing a replacement for Highway Truck Number Five, which was purchased in 2011. This replacement is for an existing half-ton truck to a half-ton F-150 four-by-four with a plow package. This vehicle is primarily used for everyday activities in one of, in one of the department's on-call trucks. It is used with vehicle-mounted arrowboard during traffic control operations. It is also used to transport manually operated snow blowers to clear crosswalks, building approaches, ramps, train station, and Lincoln Street. The sum to come from unassigned fund balance, the estimated tax impact, none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote is required. We'll open it up to the public. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments?
No. Fine as is.
Fine, then I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 19, which is a Highway Truck Replacement in the amount of $53,558.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Article 20, Public Works Facility Garage. To see if the town will raise and appropriate through special warrant article the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of design work on a new garage at the Public Works Complex on New Fields Road. This sum to come from an unassigned fund balance of $25,000, water fund in the amount of $12,500, and sewer fund in the amount of $12,500. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation, and a majority vote is required. Mr. Vlasic?
Yeah, this particular project continues some efforts in previous years where an architect did the programming for the DPW and come up with a concept plan for the facility itself. What we're trying to do with this particular project is now take this and site it on the site. We also have some new land next to Public Works, the existing Public Works, and situate it for the fuel island and also circulation throughout the site. What this project will also do at this time is to develop a concept budget also. How much is this going to cost? And what is also a little different this year than, than last year is we also have it in there where we're going to look at DPW operations for the current and future staffing levels also. And this was a suggestion from the Facilities Group.
Thank you. And by Facilities Group, Mr. Dean, that's the Facilities Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me on that.
Just for the record. Any members of the public wish to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Selectwoman Gilman, did you?
No, it was discussed at the Facilities Advisory Committee, and it was thought that this is a good first or second step because that garage has been in need of, has been in danger, I should say, of failure for a number of years, and it's time to pay attention to it.
I, I think that's really important to note, and that is a difference between this warrant article and the warrant article from last year, which was the only article that did not pass. And I know that previously, the Facilities Advisory Committee objected to previous warrant articles. So I think that, number one, it's important to note that, that they've endorsed this, that Public Works has gone back to the drawing table and assessed what's really in need in that garage. If anybody has ever been out there, even in the last eight or nine years, it's in dire need of repair. It's quickly, swiftly, if not already, going to be a hazard, so.
If it isn't already.
I think it's very important, particularly a deliberative session, that between staff and us, the Select Board, that we just explain this to the voters, that this is different. The amount of money may be similar, but it's a vastly different warrant article, and it truly is in need.
I agree.
Any other comments?
No, just co-sign that.
Then with that, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 20 for the Public Works Facility Garage in the amount of $50,000. Works Facility Garage in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Oh, he said aye.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
That was four zero. Motion passes. Thank you, Joanna. Article twenty-one, downtown parking pedestrian and traffic analysis, to see if the town will raise and appropriate through special warrant article, the sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of conducting a traffic and parking, traffic and pedestrian analysis in the downtown area to include a portion of Front Street, Water Street, String Bridge, Franklin Street, Bow Street, Chestnut Street, Center Street, and other streets in the general downtown area. The sum to come from unassigned fund balance. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote is required. Open it up to the public. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I guess the only thing I'm, sorry, I need to talk about is that during the budget process, I don't think there was enough information at the Budget Recommendation Committee meetings on this, so a few voted no. It wasn't unanimous. And this is for traffic, for parking, our ordinances allow for condos to be built now with zero parking, and we have at least three projects that have been approved. So we need to know what we have for parking. We have to make sure we're okay with our winter parking van parking and for future, because, you know, we're inviting people to move into our town to buy these condos. We really don't want the current people living here and the new people moving in to not have parking during our storms especially, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Gilman?
Well, the other part of it is see if they can come up with some new kind of traffic pattern, or the idea that's such a bottleneck of space, there's not a whole lot that can be done with it, but maybe fresh eyes will bring us a different, how do you say, different solution, or at least something to make.
Belt roots?
Well, I tried that, but.
Right. You did before.
Pedestrian safety and the cycling is really something that needs to be looked at about how to bring it in, in a safe manner.
Any other comments? And Mr. Dean, this analysis will encompass parking, traffic, and pedestrian all in one?
Yes, that's the plan.
All right. Seeing no other comment, I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article twenty-one for the downtown parking pedestrian and traffic analysis in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four zero. Article twenty-two, Conservation Fund, to see if the town will raise and appropriate through special warrant article, the sum of fifty thousand dollars to the Conservation Fund established pursuant to RSA thirty-six A colon five. These funds will be used for purposes consistent with the Conservation Fund, including the purchase of interests in real property to be held for conservation purposes. This sum to come from unassigned fund balance. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote is required.
Quick comment, Mr. Chair. If we could add the words "to be added to" to the Conservation Fund in the second line, just to belt and suspender that.
Open it up to members of the public. Seeing none, we had a presentation last week from our Conservation Manager, as well as the Chair and Vice Chair of the Conservation Committee.
You did?
Who explained quite thoroughly that this money is used much more in addition to just buying land, and I think that for those wondering what this money is used for, I thought they gave a pretty thorough explanation, that it goes towards fees, other applications, grants.
Appraisals.
Appraisals, et cetera, so I support this article again, as I have in years past. Any other comment? Then I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article twenty-two, the Conservation Fund, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, with the wording to be amended to read, "The sum of fifty thousand dollars to be added to the Conservation Fund established pursuant to RSA thirty-six A colon five."
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Article twenty-three, to appropriate to non-capital reserve fund snow and ice deficit, the amount of fifty thousand dollars, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be added to the snow and ice deficit non-capital reserve fund previously established. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote is required. Open it up to members of the public. Seeing none. Any questions or comments from the board?
Fine as is.
Mr. Dean, did you want to speak to this quickly?
No, just that it's functioned well in prior years, and it's a good fund to have on hand when we have deficit years with snow and ice.
Very well. Seeing no further discussion, I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article twenty-three to appropriate to the non-capital reserve fund for snow and ice deficit in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes four zero. Article twenty-four, Fire Inspector Vehicle, to see if the town will raise and appropriate through special warrant article, the sum of forty-nine thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a replacement for fire department inspector vehicle. This purchase would replace a two thousand twelve Jeep Patriot with a hybrid Ford Explorer. The vehicle will be used for incident command, and the sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote is required. Chief, did you want to speak to it real quick? I know you like an open mic.
No, I thank you very much. The article's pretty straightforward. We're looking to replace an aging vehicle, and as we brought up during the process of the Budget Committee, one of the problems of the Jeep Patriot is we found about a year ago that the equipment on the roof had caused a significant water leak, and we were puddling inside, and through Harry Lindsey's investigation, we figured out it has black mold growing in there, so we've been through an abatement process. So to employ us for health reasons to replace it as well, but we're excited to kind of follow the police department's lead and move toward a hybrid fleet. This will be the first. The vehicle I drive, I think, is a two thousand fourteen regular Explorer, so in future years will come to you, and hopefully they'll still make the hybrids and perhaps even an all-electric vehicle. So we're trying to move in this direction when we can. Currently, our big apparatus is not electric vehicle compatible yet, but I'm sure in the future they will too, so we appreciate your support to replace that vehicle.
Terrific, thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I just, I think we're making strides on just our energy efficiency and ways to deal with things like that better. So thank you, Chief, and everyone else who's been participating in these efforts.
I think that's right. I think all of the department heads have looked for energy efficiency, sustainability, and, again, we were always praising the Energy Committee, but the work that you've done, the recommendations that you've brought forth have really moved this town forward significantly, so thank you.
Education.
Yep.
Makes a big difference.
Anyone else? Then I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article twenty-four, the Fire Inspector Vehicle, in the amount of forty-nine thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes four zero. Article twenty-five, ADA CRF and Study, to see if the town will vote to establish a non-capital reserve fund under RSA thirty-five colon one C for the purpose of implementing the town's ADA transition plan under the jurisdiction of the code enforcement officer, and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be placed in this fund. And further, the Select Board shall be named agents of the fund and be authorized to make expenditures from the fund. The sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Estimated tax impact, none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote is required. Any members of the public wish to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. I know this is something that the board had asked Mr. Dean to work on earlier in the year. We had an ADA study done. There's plenty of work to be done, and I think establishing this fund is the first step in achieving some of our goals to be more ADA compliant.
I agree with that. And if I'm not incorrect, our Assistant Town Manager went through with the Department of Labor for an inspection, and I'm sure this is a matter that came up in a few places.
Yes, with the understanding that we're making progress.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment? Okay, then I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article twenty-five for the ADA CRF study in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes four zero. Excuse me. Article twenty-six, Town Hall Revolving Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to be added to the Town Hall Revolving Fund previously established. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Estimated tax impact, none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote required. Open it up to the public. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I think this is a very small dollar on something that's going to require more dollars, but to get started on the savings of making improvements and repairs now is, I think, a good idea, making a commitment.
And I think the work that you've started applying for grants, I know that the Arts and Culture Commission is doing work both at a longer view with a master plan, but also short-term, what are some quick things they can do?
Yeah.
And I know that they plan to come back, the first meeting in February, to follow up on their presentation from a few weeks ago regarding the chairs. Melissa, just a quick question, and if you don't have the answer, it's fine. Do we know what the balances of the ARPER funds?
Oh, yeah.
I thought you might know.
Hold on one second.
We're taking bets. I think it's seven hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Who are you betting with, yourself?
Finance director.
All right, so seven hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-four. And it looks like as of eight, eight twenty, twenty-two is the last time you folks allocated it for a project or anything.
And those funds are available through two thousand twenty-four, correct?
They have to be, they have to be spent by two thousand twenty-six. They have to be allocated or promised by two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. It's, you know, it's not a lot of money.
No.
For the needs that we have. And one thing to keep, one thing to keep in mind with the twenty, you know, allocation by twenty-four and the spending by twenty-six, money that can be given can also be taken away, so I think it's also, we need to, if we can identify something that this money can be used for, you know, saving it for a rainy day may jeopardize, should it be taken back from those that we gave.
Yeah, but I have to say, I think this is a project that we can get between twenty-four and twenty-six, we can identify, between now and twenty-four and then twenty-six, we can identify and start work on something.
I know that Mr. Ruffner had brought to you the request that shares be purchased somewhat sooner rather than later. That would qualify under ARPER if we started, but I agree with Julie. This is a project that definitely would qualify.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article twenty-six for the Town Hall Revolving Fund in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes four zero. Article twenty-seven, to appropriate to the trust fund of the Swayze Parkway, three thousand nine hundred dollars, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand nine hundred and zero dollars to be added to the Swayze Parkway Trust Fund previously established. This sum to come from an unassigned fund balance. This amount is equivalent to the amount of permit fees collected during the prior year for use of the Swayze Parkway. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation, and a majority vote is required. We'll open it up to the public for comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments?
None. Fine as is.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to recommend Article twenty-seven to appropriate three thousand nine hundred dollars to the Swayze Parkway Trust Fund.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes four zero. Article twenty-nine, Treasurer Appointment, to see if the town will vote to change the office of Town Treasurer from an elected position to an appointed position in accordance with RSA forty-one colon twenty-six E. Such appointment shall be made in accordance with RSA six hundred and sixty-nine colon seventeen D, upon recommendation of the town manager with approval of the Select Board. Such appointment shall be made in writing and shall include the compensation to be paid. If approved, the person holding the elected office shall continue to hold such office until the next annual town election following the vote, and a majority vote is required. First, open it up to the public. Mr. Stevens, our Finance Director.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So the point of this article is to kind of bring some stability to the treasurer position, in my opinion, in speaking with Town Manager. It's a pretty big and vital position to finance, to leave up to appointment. Treasurer gets involved with our monthly cash reconciliations, transfer of cash on a regular basis, not to mention our AP warrant, accounts payable warrants every week, two weeks. We have a really solid person in the role now, and they work very well with the department. There's a lot of time invested in getting her to this point, and she also has a lot of public sector knowledge, so it seems like it'd be good to be able to elect this person, whether it's the current person or a future person, so that we get some control over instability and continuity through the years with the person in the role.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that it is a very important position in our financial administration. Can't be underscored enough as far as that goes, and I think our intent, I think Corey may have alluded to it, but our intent would be to bring forward the recommendation of the current treasurer to be the first appointed treasurer, and then again, create some continuity in that office and not have to worry about every three years, you know, there might be a change or something different.
Yep. Thanks, sounds reasonable to me. Any questions or comments from the board?
I think this is long overdue. It's a wonderful idea.
This is kind of following a trend at the, well, at the county level anyway, in that we just extended the terms of sheriff and registry of deeds to whatever, to four years because of that same thing. They had a two-year cycle, so, you know, they're running for reelection as soon as they got in the door. And if it flips, then those are more of a career positions, and to have it kind of under threat every two years is unfortunate for the people that work below them.
Yeah.
So this goes right along with that, and appointing will give us an opportunity to have a really settled, functioning finance department, you know, well-oiled machine.
Qualified.
Qualified.
And I'm very glad to hear that our current treasurer is interested in staying in this position if this passes.
Well, also, we have a year to fix a salary. Well, also, we have a year to fix a salary, so it's not like something's going to jump up this year.
Right. Good. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. There's no other comment, then I would entertain a motion, the select board, to recommend Article 28 as written.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion passes for zero. We're getting there. Article 29, Cable TV Fund Amendment. Shall the town amend the Cable Access Revolving Fund established pursuant to RSA 31:95B by Article 37 of the 2010 Town Warrant as follows, quote, "Revenues received from cable franchise fees will be deposited into the fund in an amount determined by the town manager or governing body annually, and the money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund on reserved fund balance. The town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the town manager or governing body, and no further approval is required by the legislative body to expand. Such funds may be expended only for the purpose for which the fund was created," end quote."
And Mr. Chair, that question mark should be a period.
I thought so.
Yeah. It's a typo.
Thank you. I could not find the typo. I saw it earlier. Thank you.
And this article, obviously, was the result of conversations around the cable TV fund and trying to figure out which percentage would be the right percentage. And in conversations with the finance director, I thought was, well, maybe if we leave it open, we can make it flexible enough that the fund can be managed in a certain way to, maybe we need to change those percentages a couple of times a year and give ourselves some flexibility in how we manage it.
Mr. Stevens?
That's about it. I was just going to say, the only real change to the original article when it was established is that we're giving the flexibility on how much really comes, goes back to general fund because we need to make sure that the CATV is taken care of, say, first, I guess it's, you know, per opinion, but, you know, make sure it's short of, make sure we're putting a way for when we need to invest in the equipment further down the road, and then turn the remainder back to general fund, or whatever it is that the select board and town manager choose.
From a budget perspective, having been on the Budget Committee off and on over the last 10 years, this is something that the Subcommittee for General Government has been wanting to do. So I won't speak on behalf of Anagreasia, but I will say that I'm very happy to see this article.
And I think the more that we're asking from Exeter TV, and as we continue our discussion and communication, I think more is going to be asked, and given the talent that we have, and try to recruit new talent to join the team that we have, we're going to need access to some funding.
Yes, we have some possibilities coming up in the very near future.
Yep.
So we need to make sure that we've got, they have the resources if they're called upon to do additional work. Thank you.
Any other comment? Select woman coming?
Yep.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for the select board to recommend Article 29, the Cable TV Fund Amendment, as written.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion passes for zero.
Can I, as written with the period and not the question mark, right?
Correct.
Sorry.
Nope, that's a good catch.
Nicky, me.
Article 30, Re-Adopt Veterans Credit. Shall the town read up the optional veterans' tax credit in accordance with RSA 72:28-2 for an annual tax credit on residential property of $500? We talked about this a couple meetings ago briefly.
And this does have to go on the warrant.
Yep. Self-explanatory.
Yep, just to let everybody know, 500 is the maximum limit. Other towns give out less.
Oh, thank you. Okay, if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion for the select board to recommend Article 30 to re-adopt the veterans' credit for an annual tax credit on residential property of $500.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion passes for zero. We have two remaining articles, both of which are citizens petitions. The first of which is Article 31, which I'll read. By petition, shall the town vote on the petition of Duane Staples and other registered voters of the town of Exeter, New Hampshire, to see if the town will vote to authorize and direct the Exeter Select Board to keep the roadway in Swayze Parkway completely open to motorized pleasure vehicles, with travel being in a one-way direction as it currently exists. This will keep the Swayze Parkway as an area that can be fully accessed by all without creating hardships for those with mobility issues, allow motorized vehicles in the roadway so that we will be able to keep and enjoy the farmer's market that has been a tradition in the parkway for many years, and will also allow motorized vehicles to be able to use the roadway for events and pavilion concerts. This will still allow the roadway in Swayze Parkway to be closed for events, but will ensure that the above-mentioned items will still be able to be enjoyed by all citizens in the area. Mr. Staples contacted me earlier today, and unfortunately, due to a work commitment, he could not be here. He wanted to be here to formally present the petition. He did indicate that he was going to be at deliberative session. Obviously, citizens petition, we don't change the, cannot change the wording or intent, and unless there's a dollar figure to be appropriated, the select board does not have to vote to recommend or not. So we're just throwing that out.
We don't have to vote one way or another, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Because there's no dollar figure.
Right, yeah. When it comes to a citizens petition, I try to...
Again, just for conversation piece, I don't want to put words in the mouths of the author of the petition, but on the surface, it appears to be an appeal, that's my word, of a vote from earlier this year that is pending litigation, and I make the analogy of appealing a judge's decision before a judge issues the decision. So, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it, but I would just, to me, it seems a little premature. Mr. Dean, I don't know if council had an opportunity to review this? Again, just for conversational purposes.
Yes, they have looked at it. They've offered a few comments on it. They did say that the process is ongoing, as you know, right? And so we're in, and I expect to get another update on that process this week to see where it is specifically. Orders are either here or coming on this, and so the comment was, if the vote, you know, I'm just going to lay it out there, I mean, if the vote passed in this format, it could overturn what was being done in the courts. And that's just, that's a possibility. I did ask the question about if the process was complete, what would happen at that point? And the answer I got was, if the process was complete by the court, it would be done. It would be complete. So it would not have any impact on that.
So if I understand you correctly, if the court, between now and March 14th, if the court finalizes the pending litigation based upon the March 2022 vote, even if this citizens petition, Article 31, passed, it would not supersede the judge's ruling on the first vote? Did I understand that?
That's what I believe I heard.
Okay.
But we'll have a follow-up on that for our next meeting, just so that the public is aware.
Yes.
Or understanding, anyway.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to Article 32, it's another citizens petition, and, Mr. Dean, I may have missed when I read through this. I know Mr. Staples petitioned Article 31. I did not see the petitioner for Article 32. Did I miss that, or?
That's a good question.
And I ask that only because it would have been nice always to have the petitioner here to speak to the, I don't feel comfortable speaking to the petitions.
The first name on the list is Christopher Zigmour.
That's usually what we use to...
So that's the petitioner?
Yeah.
Was an invite sent to Mr. Zigmour for this evening?
Not for tonight, I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, if we could reach out to him to make sure he's available for deliberative session.
Okay.
This petition is in the packet. It's about three pages. Would the board like me to read all three pages?
I would reference that, the meeting minutes of the, you probably know the date better, the meeting that this was presented to us by the Sustainability Committee and our Natural Resources Planner?
Yep.
Because the text of it is what they presented to us.
No, it's not, and I, and I, no, I read it twice, and seemingly, seemingly, no, no, seemingly it appears that way, and I wrote some notes, and then when I went back, it's not identical. It's very close.
We've had at least two different drafts.
Yep, but this is separate.
A third one. Yeah, okay.
So let's start by introducing, the article is, "By Petition Shall the Town Vote to Create an Ordinance to Limit the Distribution and Subsequent Disposal of Single-Use Plastics Through Reduction and Limits on All Town Property." And then it goes on to explain what the ordinance would and would not do. It provides the purpose, the definitions, product exceptions, organizational exceptions, oversight and enforcement, and that is the section, Selectwoman Gilman, and I saw a difference there.
Yep.
And I guess what sort of confused me was, I thought, and again, I don't know who the petitioner is, Mr. Dean, I take you at your word of who signed it first, I'm not sure, you know, I don't want to publicly assume that that's who is the petitioner, but I think the board, what confused me was that the board, at the third and final public hearing, provided feedback to the Sustainability Coordinator, as well as the Sustainability Committee, with the intent of, I thought they'd be back January 30th. Obviously, it's within the petitioner's right to draft a citizens petition that's been signed by the appropriate number of folks, but it still doesn't, even though it does vary from the two other drafts we saw from the Sustainability Committee, and I don't know who wrote this, it's very similar, but it still doesn't take into consideration enforcement, and by enforcement, I mean, who is authorized under the RSA.
Thank you.
The town manager and the department head are not authorized. Code enforcement officer is authorized under the RSA, as well as the health officer.
Well, it depends, if this is, this is ordinance, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if this is a town ordinance, as opposed to like a zoning board ordinance, there's some discretion there, I think, of who enforces it, but most of those are enforced by the police department.
And they'd have to be present, right? It couldn't be...
Yeah.
These were some of the things that, as a body, we were working through.
Yeah. So, you know, and I think that in terms of eliminating or mitigating the use of single-use plastics, this board was, including Selectwoman Ratriolov, unanimously in agreement that we were in favor of working with the Sustainability Committee to get there. My initial thoughts is if this, is if this passes, we still have the unanswered questions of funding for Parks and Rec that we discussed. We have the outstanding issue of storage, as we discussed. We have the outstanding issue of enforcement, as we discussed, and we have the outstanding issue of definition of town property.
Yes.
So I know we spoke of...
Parks.
Parks, but does that include streets?
Yeah. Clouds Cupcake is out front in the parking lot?
Or if there's a, you know, any road racer or something?
About their issue with the packaging and things, so, I don't know. I thought we were, well, we have to, this is a work in progress, so.
We supposedly, I don't know if it's still active, but had an ordinance to, for sidewalk signs, so that we, people would have to pay to be able to put a, one of the A-frame signs out on the sidewalk and get a sticker from the code enforcement officer, because they were just being strewn about, and pedestrians were having to do this kind of thing, so we made an ordinance to keep them close to the building.
Yeah, I guess...
This is similar, that's our, that's our property that we were regulating.
Yeah, and so, a couple of things that if this passes, I'd want to have an answer to, is who's going to be present that can enforce it, because they're going to have to be present at these events? I mean, you can't just have someone call up and say, someone's violating her ordinance, and then they get mailed, I don't know, I don't know. I was hoping we were still working on this, but this kind of ties our hands a little bit.
Mr. Dean, I want to be consistent with both citizens petitions, so I'm going to ask the same question I did of Article 31. Did council have an opportunity to review this, and if so, were any comments made?
Yes, so I took some notes down, the, some of the comments that were made had to do with the would or would not, and whether that's an issue as far as the ordinance being adopted, and I was told that that didn't really impact whether it would be from a form perspective, it would be okay to still have this adopted. On the plastics, there's minimal guidance to make corrections, that was one of their comments. They did make the comment, attempt to regulate on town property with town roads, they used the example of a delivery truck delivering to a local business and not following the ordinance, what would be the ramification for that? They raised some issues about the definitions and where they came from. They also indicated that if it were to pass, the select board would have quite a bit more work to figure out who was doing what. Reasonable replacements was brought up, how is reasonableness determined, and how can reasonableness be challenged within the ordinance? So that was raised as an issue. And then the ordinance impacts vendor permits, but it's not in the vending regulations, so in their mind, from a structural perspective, it's a bit of an incomplete ordinance, because we will end up cross-referencing one ordinance with another to try to figure out if somebody's in compliance or not. So those were the notes that I took down today.
I was wondering, when you have a chance, could you type that up and send it to us as a memo, so I've got it, instead of trying to write it all down?
Happy to do that.
Just so I can keep track of all of it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I mean, I want to say, as a board, I mean, we've given our word to keep working with the Sustainability Committee, and, you know, we don't, is it worth having, Mr. Dean, a conversation with Kristen Murphy to try to determine if the committee still is willing or would like to continue working with the board on what we were working on, or, I mean, I don't want to assume that one has something to do with the other.
Right.
I mean, there's no one here to speak to it, so I don't know.
Well, if it's here, it's there, right? I mean, it can't be withdrawn at this point.
Right.
Right, so I don't feel comfortable trying to move forward with, I guess we could work on some different things, aspects of it, but we have to see what happens. I mean, we could be working... I mean, we could be working on trying to find solutions and.
Go down that road.
Yeah, we're going down a road that we don't even know if we're going to be on the right one. It kind of.
I just think it's awkward at best that we've committed to work with a committee.
Well, it's just like being, you know, in court to see what's happening and then, you know, I don't, I don't know necessarily what to do about it. I don't know what to do about any of these things. Other than this is the kind of town government we allow for and so we'll just let it shake out how it shakes out.
Yeah. My concern is just that I was hoping we were going to keep moving on, work on it.
There's nothing we could do about it. Selectwoman, yeah.
So I guess some clarifications in the meantime would be helpful. And that's about enforcement and who, who could enforce us because in my view, with the limited information I feel I have now, whoever would be the enforcement person would have to be present at any kind of permanent event. I mean, you can't enforce something if you, or we don't enforce it and then what would that do? I don't know. Long question.
I mean, the, the, the next step is deliberative session.
Yeah.
And, you know, Mr. Dean, if we could reach out to the individual that's in the first signature and if it is not that person, then maybe we could try to figure out who is the actual petitioner that can speak to this.
Yeah, and I, just so the board is aware, the expectation we had was that the policy that the board had directed be drafted was drafted and was going to come to the board on the 30th of January. And so there was some conversations between myself and the Natural Resources Planner about what exactly would be coming to the board on the 30th and would it be, excuse me, would it be this ordinance that you're reading tonight along with a policy and sort of a, I don't want to use the word, but two conversations. One coming from the SAC and one coming from the staff.
The petition's here. It's not, it's, it's here.
Understood.
You know, it's part of the, it's part of the warrant, you know, it's, it's a citizens petition. So I think the best thing is, is if, you know, whoever organized this could come speak to it at deliberative session and maybe answer some of these questions that we have, then maybe they're adequately answered.
Right.
You know, we're, we're asking, you know, valid questions from where we sit, but maybe they have answers. And I think to be fair, you know, it'd be, it would have been nice to have somebody here tonight, but the next step's deliberative session and.
Can I just follow up on the 30th? Are we still going, are we still expecting our draft, the draft that we asked for back or no?
Well, I'm listening to what you're, how you're deliberating tonight.
So the only reason why I'm asking that, just so everyone understands it, is I think it's a, we asked for a draft back. I think it is important that we get it back. And Kristen was going to do that. Am I correct in that? Yeah. So I would like to get that draft back because that's, that was the next step we were at and we don't know what's going to happen from this point forward. I would like to see the work product back from our last meeting and what we asked for.
I think that's fair. I mean, we shouldn't be presumptive. You know, we, we asked the committee and staff to come back to us. We gave them, you know, their assignment, for lack of a better word. I mean, is the petition here? It's here. But let's not be presumptive that one has something to do with the other.
Yeah. We had what, three? We were making progress there and I'd like to at least.
Fine with me.
But on, kind of on the same lines, Mr. Dean, can you remind me, citizens petitions can be, can be edited at the deliberative session, not by the select board, but by?
You can't change intent.
Right.
The subject matter of the, of the article cannot be altered.
Right. But this could be, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to recommend it.
Can I understand your?
So I know council before said things like, well, if the subject matter is single-use policy, plastics ordinance, and then you make changes within the ordinance, that's, that's an open question for him to answer. But I think he's allowed, he's allowed it in the past or the moderator has without.
Well, the intent is all the way through this thing, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. And then Article 33 is to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting, which we have none.
Nope. Do we ever open that up to public comment for the warrant articles, I mean, for the citizens petition? I don't know if anyone's here or no.
No, we, I mean, we have one, the petitioner's.
Somebody presents something.
Okay.
We have a member of the public here and if you'd like to weigh in, we'd love to hear what you have to say.
I wasn't sure Renee, why you.
I'm not putting you on the spot.
No, I was just wanting to see what the articles were. And yeah, those last two are very special.
Thank you. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the 2023 operating budget and warrant articles.
So, no.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We can jump into regular business.
Wow, pretty good. Five of nine. That's not bad for.
Well, we're not done yet.
I know, I know, but that part of it.
Now it's simple things. All right. That's a lot.
Nothing's ever simple.
I know.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, Renee.
Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you and I'm sure I could use a break.
Okay. We have no elderly exemptions or solar exemptions tonight. We just have veterans credits. I move to approve a veterans credit for map 82, lot 33, in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Four zero.
I move to approve a veterans credit for map 68, lots, lot six, unit 433, in the amount of $500 for tax year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Four zero.
I move to approve a veterans credit for map 74, lot 66, in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Four zero. Moving on to permits and approvals, we have a memo from Deputy Fire Chief Jason Fritz requesting, on behalf of the E-911 Committee, who have been working with Phillips Exeter Academy on the new faculty housing project off of Gilman Lane, they need to add a new street to this area and the new street proposal name would be Stucky Place. In our packet, you'll see a map that Selectwoman Belanger alluded to earlier to help illustrate the area and there is a recommendation here. It also says that Deputy Chief Fritz would be here on the 30th. Mr. Dean, I didn't know if it was for this and you want to table it or he was just?
He did say January 30th, so if, if the board's ready to act, I think you can act tonight. No, Chief Wilking is here.
Chief.
I would like to, you know, confirm what Town Manager Dean said. I think Jason assumed that tonight's meeting was more in line with public hearings and the date that he sent it with Pam was just throw it on for the 30th. I'll be back the 30th for some grant stuff, but I think the map is pretty self-explanatory. I think you had some questions on the Gilman Loop, the Gilman Lane and what would be that little tail that sticks off. So if you're okay with that, he's way okay with that. I'll stand in for him tonight, so.
Mr. Dean, who maintains, who will maintain?
I was just going to say, is it a public road or a private road?
I'd have to get the answer to that. I'm not sure. Typically, a private way would be maintained by the property owner.
Would the board be more inclined, you know, and thank you, Chief Wilking, we don't, we don't need Deputy Chief Fritz here at the 30th, but I think, Mr. Dean, we should find that out unless Chief Wilking knows.
In conversation, I don't believe, I can't say it to be 100%, so perhaps it's prudent to wait, but I don't believe the town maintains the current Gilman Lane. That's a PEA access piece done until that. We know it goes down to the observatory and into that, that meadow along the river. I think it could be reasonably assumed that PEA will continue to support that, but we can look into that and perhaps answer that more on the 30th if you'd like.
Is there a dire need for this to be addressed this evening or?
No. It's just housekeeping. As the committee comes up, they're looking for your support with the road name changes and it's just, so no, you can bring it up on the 30th if you'd like.
I'd feel more comfortable.
I would too. Because getting your access down to the stadium, I know that came up during the planning board part of, of that project, so.
Stadium well and yeah.
I know it's depicted on the map. I know that access piece is still there. I know Unitil still has a transfer station down there, fire to the right-hand side. So I know that would be important to maintain, whether it's PEA's responsibility to maintain the road of the towns, but we can, we can chat more.
Yeah.
So you're specifically on who's going to maintain the road and if access will be maintained to both the Unitil substation and the, and the observatory down in there. So your question's not really Stucky Place, it's more.
No, mine is Stucky Place.
You're just.
Yeah, because they guaranteed the access is still going to be there during the planning board. It's just that this part of it, I don't recall that conversation at the planning board level. Renaming this little loop, just, I don't know, hook, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah. So. Stucky Place, to me, doesn't look like it has anything to do with the access along the river.
Right.
To me, it looks more easterly over, you know, over behind the old, the old High Street Market where the road that goes straight down the river, we've accessed for years and years.
Yeah.
But again, we can certainly make sure, but.
Yeah. I just want to be clear.
And I also, I mean, we just talked about the sewer line replacement going to Gilman Lane. And from the way this is, you know, tiny little drawing I can see here, Gilman Lane, I know that they were going to flip where the entrance is to where that four, four-way light is on Portsmouth Ave.
Yeah.
So that's going to perhaps change the calculation of that sewer replacement.
So I know there's been some discussion with Phillips Exeter on the naming of the road and whatnot. Perhaps it'd be wise to have somebody from Phillips Exeter that could actually speak to that and will look into who that might be and perhaps we can invite them to the 30th because some of the questions you're asking, I'm not sure when to the purview of the 911 Committee, we're talking about just naming the road. You've asked great questions.
No, and I, and I don't even think Deputy Chief Fritz has to, has to be here for the 30th.
I'll be on the 30th as well. So we've got some grant things all run by you, so.
But as long as Mr. Dean can get the answers and maybe a representative from the Academy?
Yeah.
Okay. So the board's comfortable tabling this?
Yeah.
Okay. Town managers report, Mr. Dean.
Okay, a few things tonight. One is that I was asked earlier tonight if I had a chance to meet with the Down Easter last week. I did and they are looking to forward some grant money to the town if the town can come up with a plan for the train station. So we're in discussions and talking about that. Also, we talked about the concept of quiet zones. That's been brought up here before and I can tell you that the NEPRA organization which runs the Down Easter is opposed to quiet zones. They're actually on the record as saying that we, we don't favor them. It does take quite a bit of work to get one established. That includes looking at your grade crossings and having really a pretty in-depth study about, about, you know, the different things that you need to do to support a quiet zone. So that is going to be in the works.
I just have a quick question on that. I know it's expensive getting all the equipment and the bars and the lights, et cetera, and getting them coordinated. Is that something that the town would be funding if we went ahead with this quiet zone, that we would have to be responsible for the safety of the passways?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'll research it and try to get back to you on it.
Okay.
The community power documents are signed and sent. Those are gone and as of last week, so we should, we've taken another step in community power, which is good. The annual reports continue to come in and I just wanted to acknowledge Pam McElroy in my office, who has done a great job pulling them all together and getting them from the different departments. We did receive notice that we are getting two grants through the DES as well. One is for cybersecurity and the other is for lead lining, to begin our lead lining program. So it's pretty exciting, got that news today. And then I did want to mention, I did send a court motion to dismiss out to the select board that had to do with Shaftmaster litigation with the town. The motion, the fact that the motion dismisses granted means the things will go to the next step, whatever that step is. So we'll keep you posted on any further developments in that area. And also, there was a story in the local paper about another, a second lawsuit filed by Mr. Shaftmaster and that is over in the planning board area at the moment. So that process will take place through the planning board, is my understanding.
I have one thing to add, but a question on that. And it may not be possible, but is there a way that the board can be notified of litigation before we read the newspaper?
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay.
Be notified.
I have a request, if you're done with your report.
Yes.
We have our all boards meeting coming up and back in December, mid-December, you had sent out a draft agenda. I'd like the boards and committees to have several weeks' notice, so if, if you could resend your draft that you sent in December tomorrow morning to the five board members. And I'm going to ask the board if you have any amendments, revisions, additions, subtractions to the agenda that you reply only to Mr. Dean and Assistant Town Manager Roy by Friday. Don't reply all for 91A. And then, Mr. Dean, if that, if that final agenda, after you receive anything from the select board by Friday, if you could get that final agenda out to all the boards and committees, excuse me, Monday, the 23rd, next Monday.
Yeah.
Because I know there are several committee members. I was approached by two chairs this week already about what the agenda is, so I'd like to give people notice.
Good.
All right. Is that fair to everybody to get it by Friday?
Okay.
Select Board Committee reports. We'll start with you, Selectwoman Belanger, because I know you've got a.
I've got it. Yeah, sorry. I'm just putting my reminder to email Russ in the morning. Okay, sorry. Okay. I already have my suggestion, so. Okay. That's going to go there. So my first meeting was the Conservation Commission on January 10th and I was asked three questions. One was about future flooding in Suzie Parkway, if we have any plans for that. The agenda for the all boards meeting and the number of private wells and septic systems in town. Working on the answer. The Chair and David Short asked questions. Rain's barn work is ready to begin in the spring. If the trails are wet, please consider not using them. And so this was on January 10th and today they posted, "It may not be spring, but warming weather is likely going to impact our trail conditions. Please avoid using trails when trail surfaces are soft." When it's muddy, we're leaving ruts on the trails and they make them not usable. So people who use our trails, if it's not frozen ground, please don't use them right now. There was also an issue with some cars broken into at Oakland Parking Lot and the committee, the Conservation Commission asked that people, please lock your cars and not leave anything in plain sight. Yeti volunteered to fix the kiosk roofs and donated their labor and were reimbursed or the voted, they voted to reimburse for materials in the amount of $245. Couple of events coming up, Snowshoe Event if weather conditions cooperate, tentatively for February with a date to be determined. And they want to do another Snow Play in Cocoa Open Barn Event, again with a date to be determined because we need snow.
Just a slight.
Might be coming Friday.
Can have a party.
We'll see. Anyway, New Hampshire Fishing Game is offering a New Hampshire Butterfly Program to monitor butterfly activity. There are going to be two upcoming workshops with a date to be determined. The workshops themselves are free, but they are, they do suggest purchasing a book on butterflies. I do need to follow up with Kristen to see if the books will be available to purchase at the workshop. And then Kristen gives committee reports to the Conservation Commission. She talked about the Sustainability Committee at that point was going to ask the select board to change their mind about the single-use plastic ordinance proposal. The Tree Committee has labeled some additional trees and have been updating their Facebook with monthly updates. Being part of the tree, city requires an annual update report to that. an annual update report to that organization. There were some back-and-forth emails with concerns over some terms of conservation land that was now the town, that is now the towns, and some related issues to the property. The Chair, Andrew Coff, and Kristin Murphy were planning on meeting with that person to have a face-to-face discussion on that. The upcoming well testing event, that was January 11th, it was a mandatory meeting to attend, and their next meeting is February 14th. I, via Zoom, attended the Rocking and Planning Commission meeting on January 11th. That was an update on their housing needs assessment. The full report with appendix will be available in the next week or so. If anyone's interested in what they handed out, I asked it to be emailed to me the next day, and I was given it. I couldn't make it to Stratum in time, so I jumped on Zoom. I had a planning board meeting on January 12th. They discussed about the proposed new zoning ordinance. I don't know how much you want me to get into that, if we're going to have Dave. Are we going to have Dave talk to the board about this? I can tell you what was said at the meeting, is that right from the beginning, when our town planner was talking about doing this, he was concerned on the timing and felt it was more important for public education and understanding. We had an open house meeting on, I think it was the 5th or the 6th, at the high school, and there were some really good questions asked. And they're looking into that and getting the sustainability aspect with Kristin more involved. So he's not 100% confident. Of course, it's up to the board to get it on the Warren article, as a Warren article, because he thinks it just needs more time. He wants to read through that three times with no questions. That's his goal. So I applaud that effort. We had a quorum Thursday night, but we had no vice chair, we had no chair.
Watched.
And we, so we talked about it a lot, but also asked that we bring it up at our next meeting to give the Chair and the Vice Chair and some of the regular standing members who couldn't be there a chance to weigh in. So that was that. We talked about the amended, to amend Article 9.4 of the Flood Plan Development Ordinance to strengthen the town's resilience to increased flooding events and reduce impacts. So, and the next conversation about the zoning ordinance amendment, or, sorry, the zoning ordinance is to replace it, not amendment. So we'll have another discussion on January 26th.
Okay.
On that. Just one more, I promise.
No, take it.
Sorry. One week a month is a lot. I had a meeting with the Housing Advisory Committee on Friday, the 13th. Dave updated the committee on the draft map for the zoning changes, when it basically repeated what he said to the planning board. There was, so we're inviting, and Tony, I apologize, I'm not going to say your name right, Tony Tex...
Tex...
Thank you, of the Housing, Exeter Housing Authority. So we've invited him to come because we're in the process, I know, I'm sorry, I'm getting tongue-tied, it's late. We're in the process of updating our report now that the Rocking and Planning Commission has done their assessment, and that's almost ready to publish. We invited Tony to come talk to us with a list of questions for the Housing Authority, because we want to incorporate that in our update. We want to know what they have, the waiting list, what they see their future needs are, things like that. So he's coming to our February 10th meeting. And Sarah from Rocking and Planning Commission gave another overview of the Rocking and Planning Commission meeting from the two nights before. And Nick Taylor from Seacoast Workforce Housing was providing an overview of upcoming legislation in New Hampshire on housing, and he'll be doing that on a monthly basis.
Great, thank you.
I'm done.
Chief Wilkens.
Yeah, Mr. Sheriff, I could just quickly dovetail in on the report on the well water testing program. James, today, I'm sorry, you couldn't be here today, was here at the town office, and he collected 29 of the 30 samples that the homeowners were asked to bring in, so very, very good. He wanted to relay to you that they're very pleased with the pilot program. There's 115 of the 120 test kits set aside have now been spoken for, whatever.
Wonderful.
And just a shameless plug, the day after Jason Schreiber posted this up on our social media page, we doubled the amount, and we went from 40 to just under 80, and now we're at 115. So the word is getting out, people are taking advantage of it. We hope this pilot program takes off, but the numbers look extremely good, 115 of 120.
Fantastic.
I don't have a breakdown of Exeter and Northampton, because we're partnering with our neighbor to the east, but I don't know what the breakdown is.
Great.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Oh, that's perfect. Thank you so much.
Shall I go?
Please.
I had no town committee meetings, but I want to segue from your whole housing thing. Municipal and county government is hearing a bill Thursday afternoon at 1:30. It's called HB44, and it has its relative to permissible residential units in a residential zone. And basically, what it does is give property owners the outright authority to develop four dwelling units on a single-family lot, with the caveats that it must be hooked up to municipal and water services, and it must stay within the other zoning ordinance requirements such as setbacks and parking and lot coverage. So even though, and we actually already do this, only we have to go for a special exception to the zoning board, but smaller towns don't do this, and this is a way to create more housing units for both, you know, people looking, people with jobs looking for a place to stay, and people who want to stay where they stay, where they live, you know, aging in place. So this is a really very important one, and I would recommend everyone to go to the General Court website to search for HB44, read it, and then go submit your opinion. There's a line in the bottom right that says, submit remote opinion or testimony, and follow that through either way. But I know that it's gaining popularity. Last time I checked, it was 30 in favor for opposed. So that's Thursday. And also on Thursday, judiciary is hearing a number of right-to-know law things again. There's like five of them. So we need to take a look at that. One has to do with opening sealed minutes, that we should do it at least every 10 years. I know one town that does it every year, you know, they review which ones can be opened yet. There are a couple other good ones. On Wednesday, tomorrow, hurry up and get to your computer, judiciary is hearing CACR 5, which is Constitutional Amendment Concurrent Resolution, relative to, relating to fundamental rights, providing that the Constitution protects the right to marry. Concurrent amendment, no, whatever I said, CACR 5, means that if this passes through the House and Senate and is signed by the governor, then the question, which is in the legislation, goes to every town, and you vote on it at the next town meeting. And I believe it needs a three-fifths or two-thirds total of the whole state to pass. And I have a question for all of you. How do I get this stuff out to you all? When, we only meet every other week, but I'm meeting like every week right now, two days a week, sometimes three if we go into the session. And so I just spent the last two weeks reading everything, and, you know, some things are really important to Exeter, I think the housing bills are, I think the right-to-know ones are probably, a couple of them are probably going to need something. Judiciary has a big slate of bills this year. I don't know, there's, go to the website, or should we put a link on the...
If there's something that you think that we can't wait for a select board meeting, I mean, you can send it to Mr. Dean, and he can forward it to the board.
Okay.
And that wouldn't be any violation.
Yep, that's fine. I was just thinking about making more public announcements, see this bill, you know? Because the more people that sign on with the remote testimony, you don't have to come to Concorde. They learned that through the pandemic, that this electronic submission works. And if you can use that, you can write text, you can attach a letter, or you can just say, "I'm opposed," or "I'm support," and there it is. So, but people have to know what bill they're talking about, and which committee it's in, so it can be daunting if you haven't walked around the website, and so...
So I think we're okay getting it to us that way. It's, I'm not sure if you mean like for the general public.
Well, that's what I was thinking. It's just I need help to...
Well, I think we would have to think long and hard on how to do that, because social media, we want to be careful, because that was a concern from the budget perspective on the fire and the police, and using it for that purpose. I really think we need to have some more discussion on what we can use our social media for.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, if we as a board, that's going to affect the town, it's one thing, but I just don't want it to be a...
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of doing a Facebook pic this bill.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
Yeah.
I was just thinking of a button over here that says, "General Court."
You're looking at the wrong guy when you press a button. You can call myself.
Really, the next few days in my committee, I know a lot about energy, is just meeting all the different energy providers. And I have no idea what the Senate is doing, quite frankly. In fact, I just found our Senator Deborah Altshuler's office. It's down near the cafeteria.
Nice.
That was my first office in the State House. It's a good one.
Okay.
Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
You can take it up.
The River Advisory Committee postponed their meeting due to lack of agenda topics, so we will reconvene in February. Our one focus is on the work that Mr. Velaschich is doing, and he just didn't have any substantial updates, or it wasn't worth getting together.
Yeah.
And one other thing that would go to the Housing Committee, but I won't have any more information on it before, no, I will have more information on it before your next meeting, but not right now. The Speaker of the House set up a special committee on housing, and there has not been published to date its purpose or its duties. So we don't know what that means, and housing bills usually come through the municipal and county government. So there's this unknown thing that people have been assigned to and don't know what they're going to do.
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully, I'll know about that by the time you have your next meeting, I should. But we don't know if they're making legislation or reviewing the results of what we do, like committee does in legislation, or surveying.
Yeah, just send it to me. We're very fortunate that we have people that come to the Housing Advisory Committee meeting, and that's part of their job, too, is to follow that stuff.
To know that.
So it's invaluable to us. I can't follow all the changes in the bills and stuff, so... Yes, just send me an email. It's crazy.
Or Lindsay.
Moving on to correspondence, we have a letter from Attorney Summers from DTC Lawyers that looks like it was dated January 12th. It was addressed to me and members of the board, but the first time I saw it was when I read the packet over the weekend. So I apologize to Attorney Summers, I just saw this this weekend. And to your point, Selectwoman Belanger, predicament that you were in last week with the planning board, that I think, because I try to watch as many of them as I can, I think you're finding yourself, that predicament more and more, is with our land use boards, we're having a hard time keeping a quorum of, well, just a quorum, and regular members, you know, don't seem to be appearing as often as they used to. But the real problem I find is with the ZBA. And while, for the most part, their meetings have not been canceled due to lack of quorum, the quorum has been the minimum of three people. And Attorney Summers' concern, I think, is legitimate, because you're faced with, do I go forward on a petition where I only have three people voting, and the margin of error is slimmer, or do I continue to postpone? The other thing, too, is, and this is, you know, I've found this with the planning board, when the attorneys have to continually keep reappearing, I mean, it's not fair to the applicant staff to keep paying the fees. So how does that affect the board, the select board? Is that when we address attendance at the all boards and committee meeting, I mean, we have to stress to the chairs that they need to start taking the attendance requirement more seriously, and if there are, whether it be regular members or alternates that are just chronically absent, the select board needs to know so that we can deal with that issue. I mean, it's...
This is why I wanted the alternates to be included in the new, the updates, because they, I was an alternate. I watched or attended every meeting, and on the off chance I couldn't, you had to watch it, because you had to be ready at the next meeting if you were called to vote. So it's important.
So, you know, and I think that over the years, just last year in particular, it just seems that between these two boards, and there are other committees, obviously, we've been talking about committees that have to cancel their meetings, but I think with the two land use boards, planning and ZBA, you know, we're getting by with the bare minimum, and I don't have a solution.
Yeah.
I don't have a solution, but in the short term, Mr. Dean, and if the board wants, I'm happy to respond to Attorney Summers, unless you want to respond to Attorney Summers, but I'm happy to do so, but I, out of courtesy, I think she deserves a response.
Yeah, everyone deserves a response, yes.
But I think it's something that, and again, I don't have an answer right now, but we have to think about...
Well, one of the things that I would, I'm curious about is her concern about the, if the quorum's there, the quorum's there. I don't think you can hold out for, like, the full board to be there, if I'm understanding her letter properly. Did you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. So the ZBA, as I understand, like, when you talk about the planning board, you've got, your quorum is...
Four.
Four, as opposed to seven. And the ZBA is three, as opposed to five.
Right. So as long as the quorum's there, you can still do business. There's no requirement for, so if she wants to hold off, I mean, I don't know within her view, her purview, on doing that. But the concern is that any member that is sitting on the board, whether it's a full member or an alternate, needs to be prepared to vote. They should, you know, they need to watch meetings that they miss, so they're up to speed on any of the applicants.
And I think that's the main concern here, is that in her experience, and I've, you know, I try to watch as many meetings as I can, it's kind of a musical chairs with the three, it's not, it's just that it's three people, as opposed to five. It's just always a different...
Different makeup of the three people.
Well, and there's also that, that's a concern, and, you know, one of the things she comments in here is if she only has three people, and five is the size of the board, the vote may turn out differently if those other two people there to make a convincing argument about...
I know, but that's, to me, not our purview so much, as long as the quorum's there.
No, it isn't our purview to, like, select particular people who are going to think the same way, but...
No, no, I don't mean it that way.
No, no, I understand, I understand your comment. Our purview is to make sure that we're appointing...
Right. I'm saying that as long as the quorum is there, whether it's the bare minimum or the maximum, as long as the quorum is there, right, is my point. That's my only point. I understand she'd prefer to have a full board there, but that doesn't always happen. And I do want to stress, what happened at the planning board last Thursday was very unusual, very unusual. But that's why I'm going to suggest we have a cheat sheet on running meetings, because I was told I might have to run the meeting, and I had not ever run a meeting before. because I was told I might have to run the meeting and I had not ever run a meeting before and I was going through meeting minutes trying to.
Yeah, I'm not sure as Select Board you can.
I'm a voting member. But anyway, it didn't happen because the clerk showed up.
Do you want me to respond to her?
Yeah.
I think it would be worth you having a conversation with her, yeah. Like we talked about, I know that we have four members of the zoning Board right now and we have three alternates, so there are seven people that are available technically for cases. And it would seem that it's just, for whatever reason, they're not able to staff these cases, which is, seems a little odd. But we're also trying to do as much as we can about recruitment and creating brochures and leaving them here, there and everywhere, bringing them to events, letting people know we want them to volunteer and we're continuing to go down those routes too.
If we get the state to pass a law that allows people to attend via Zoom.
Wow, that's what I was just going to say when we were done here, that actually on Thursday in Judiciary, there is a bill that would allow a remote presence. I think three fifths or the majority, whichever is fewer, has to be present in the room, so it's not a quorum of people in the room, or may not be. The people who are remote have to be able to be heard and seen and communicate with those in the room. And they have to tell who's in the room with them, et cetera, and have the excuse, not just it's unreasonable, but it's unreasonable because my child is sick or something like that. So that, and when that bill was being tossed around by the sponsors, I told them about how our activity on committees expanded. We had more people coming in, more people from different demographics coming in. And then once we stopped being able to meet remotely, they slowly started to drop off because their commitments were too difficult. Especially, you know, we had, we had a couple that, you know, volunteered onto different Boards, but they have kids and so, you know. So that was one of the things that helped with this. It's still not as good as I'd like it to be, but they do, you know, defer to having a quorum present. So if it's more than, right now, we can have one person. If it's more than that, that's a way they still count as being part, count towards the quorum.
Okay.
And roll call votes.
Right. So we have a letter from St. Vincent de Paul acknowledging and thanking the town for the grant of $2,000. Also, a letter of thanks from Waypoint for approving the allocation of $10,000 in support. Also a letter of thanks from the Casa of New Hampshire for a $375 gift. a brochure from Camp Hope and Pathways Mentoring Program of Haven. Reviewing the Board Calendar, we'll meet again on January 30th. I'm going to take us right up through the election. Mr. Dean, if you could check my dates for accuracy, January 30th, February 13th, February 27th, and then March 6th, so that we're not meeting the night before election.
I have a conflict on March 6th.
Okay.
So I am traveling for work, I can be available by phone and can call into the meeting.
Okay, if you don't mind.
I do not mind.
That'd be great. I just don't want to do the Monday before the.
I do not either. You've done that very well this year, so.
I try. The February 8th is the all Boards meeting. And I would remind Select Woman Belanger, nope, never mind, for a different date. That's it.
I just have one more.
Go ahead.
We received a correspondence that's not in the packet about the downtown holiday lights. I think that it might want to go in the next packet or at least I hope, I'm not sure if this got forwarded to the actual Parade Committee. I just, I don't want this person to think that we didn't see their, you know. They're about, they wanted to keep our lights up through January or even longer, but I.
Right, and I think the response we got from the committee itself was that they couldn't, they didn't have the people power to be able to do that.
And that's fine. I just want to make sure he's responded to.
Yes.
And I, because I didn't, I didn't see that. All I know is we got it, I asked that it be forwarded to the Holiday Committee. And that was the last I heard of it, so I just want to make sure that he doesn't think his email went on deaf ears.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Speaking of packets, Melissa, thank you for sending the Select Board the link last Friday as we had asked, that was helpful. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.